Today is February 13th, 2024. The time is now 5:30 PM. This meeting of Georgetown County Council is being called to order. I see that we do have a forum present and welcome here. We're going to ask Councilor Carolina to give us the invocation and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
May I stand? Almighty and eternal God, we praise and thank you for calling us to serve your people. As we enter this new year, give us your anointing and make us a vessel of your grace to touch the lives of your people. Father, use us as a channel of your compassion. Help us to be worthy of your trust that we may be an instrument of peace and hope to all in Georgetown County. Give us courage to be an agent of change to achieve your dream or transformation. Finally, we ask you to heal our land and restore faith and righteousness in our nation. This we ask in the mighty name of Jesus. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilor Carolina, and again, thank you all for being here this evening. We move on down to our approval of agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
It is been moved by Councilor Elliott.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we defer line item 6A and line item 10B in the approval of the agenda. That would be the consent agenda procurement number 23-061, a roll-off truck for solid waste collection. And also, 10B ordinance number 23-45, which is actually the new Aldi's grocery store in Polley's Island at the corner of 17 and Pettigrew.
Before we act on the deferment, maybe get a second to the agenda.
Second.
Now, we have a motion by Councilor, well, it's taken by Councilor Newton. Okay, and we also have a motion to amend by Councilor Anderson. Is there?
Could we go over those changes again? Would you mind one more time? No, I wouldn't, and I got out of line there a minute, Mr. Chairman, that we didn't get a second and an approval on the agenda. But line item 6A on the consent agenda is procurement number 23-061, which is a roll-off truck for solid waste collection. That's been requested that be removed from the consent agenda. And then, in the general text, item 10B, which is ordinance 2345, an ordinance to amend the Brevidian Square Flexible Design District, a parcel located on the southwest corner of Highway 17 in Pettigrew and Polley's Island identified as tax map number tax map number 04-0161-016-00-00 to allow for a large retail store. And that would be that Aldi's grocery store, an addition in Polley's Island.
Thank you. We have a motion to amend the agenda deferring items 6A and 10B. Is there a second?
So moved.
It's second by Councilor McConnell. We'll first vote on the proposed amendment. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Oppose. Motion carries. Now, we will vote on the agenda as amended. Is there any discussion regarding it? All in favor on the agenda as amended, please raise your hand. Oppose. Motion carries. Thank you. We'll go down to our special reports and presentations. Tonight, we have a nonprofit spotlight, Multiplying Good. And the presentation will be made by Dan Hoppy. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to spend a little time with you this evening. Again, my name is Dan Hoppy, and I have the honor and privilege of serving as the Executive Director of Multiplying Good of South Carolina. Multiplying Good is a 52-year national nonprofit organization that focuses on recognition and making sure that our youth are prepared for leadership and giving back to their community. I'd like to show a short video that describes a little bit more about our organization, and then I'll talk about the impact of our organization right here in Georgetown County.
We both reinvest in the community and are passionate about our mission to serve others. Multiplying Good is a national nonprofit organization with more than 50 years of history. And we began as a recognition and celebration platform that we have continued to do over the years. And we do that through the Jefferson Awards. The Jefferson Awards are our recognition and celebration platform that we use to recognize outstanding public service among communities and individuals all across the country in the mission and in the spirit of elevating and celebrating outstanding acts of public service so that others will feel inspired to join in and also want to make a difference in their communities. This organization does so much to truly recognize and celebrate and find ultimately those stories of people that are doing amazing things in their community who really and truly have a heart for service and giving them a platform to tell their story.
The whole experience has been absolutely phenomenal. To be nominated as a local recipient was very humbling. And then to be amongst everybody that was a local recipient, it was literally walking amongst giants. Everyone's story was absolutely incredible. Any one of them could have been nominated as the regional or the national. Very inspired by everybody that was there. It just brings a level of support that I just had not been able to have up until this point. Warrior WOD has been essentially a one-man volunteer show. And now, there are so many people that have wrapped their arms around us and supporting us and allowing us to make a bigger impact, expand what we're doing for our veterans.
Right here in South Carolina, we make a huge impact daily with our efforts through Multiplying Good, whether it's working with our Students in Action, our changemakers, providing services and recognition across the entire state.
I am very excited to go to the conferences and meet a bunch of new people and also make an impact in the communities.
Students in Action is a leadership service and recognition program offered at no cost to all middle and high school students across the state of South Carolina. We're giving our students an opportunity to learn leadership and life skills using service as the vehicle.
I'm really excited to help our school climate and culture through all the service and activities this organization provides.
In essence, they're able to tackle issues that they are passionate about and also investigate needs that are important in the community.
I'm ready to get more students involved in all of our school activities.
I have seen students tackle things such as hunger, homelessness, food insecurity, mental health awareness, suicide prevention, all not only at the benefit of those that they're helping, but also learning important things about themselves as well.
It means the world to be a Students in Action advisor. I think it's the most fun job in the world because all that you are doing is allowing students to really find themselves in how they lead and how they work within their communities and to feel those successes that come when they plan and execute service projects.
My favorite part of Multiplying Good, and specifically Students in Action, are our leadership conferences. We bring 500 students together twice a year to come together, to collaborate with one another, to network, to gain those important leadership skills, and really see the contributions and differences that they're making in their community.
And we have a lot of fun.
Each year, these students have the opportunity to showcase the hard work that they've done all year at our end-of-year celebration. And one team is then chosen to go on to our National Jefferson Awards, representing South Carolina.
It was such a surreal moment to realize that we were national champions because, first of all, this is our first year doing the club, and it was also a long road to coming to our project.
It was something we couldn't have even envisioned. We did not go into any of the regional and local end-of-year celebrations expecting to win. And every time, we just felt so inspired by what everybody else was doing.
For me, it didn't hit that we won until we were in New York, like, last week. It was just like, we were there with such amazing and inspiring people, and to stand on the same stage as them and tell our story as well was definitely surreal.
It's just incredible. You know, when I think of Multiplying Good, I just think of students and just everyday people understanding that change really starts small, and it can be in the everyday moments and in the little things. And just knowing that your worth and your impact really can happen at this age and at this stage, and that you can really go out and make a difference.
Thank you, Multiplying Good!
Specifically around Students in Action. You heard in the video that we have over 50 teams, 50 schools that participate. And I'm very proud to be able to say that in Georgetown County, all four of the high schools participate in Students in Action, making differences right here in this community. One school that I want to point out, Andrews High School, created blessing boxes, literally built boxes in their community and filled them with supplies needed to make a difference right here in their communities. One last fun fact that I'd love to share is that we talk about the Jefferson Awards, which are the highest honor for service that anyone can be awarded in our nation. And we give one national Students in Action Jefferson Award away per year in New York City. And I'm very proud to be able to tell you, over the last eight years, seven of those Jefferson Awards went to schools in South Carolina. You have a handout about Students in Action and the work that we do. You also have my contact information. If there's any information, you're requiring additional questions you might have, please don't hesitate to reach out. But again, thank you for having me in here this evening. Any questions I can answer at this time?
Any question from council? Any comments?
The Hoppy job well done and continued the good work within Georgetown County. Question is, do you also interact with nonprofits in addition to the high school environment, but to qualified nonprofits in the community?
We actually do. So the high school or traditional school opportunity is only one way that we interact with Students in Action. But we have partnered with other organizations such as Boys and Girls Clubs, YMCA's, any place that there's a group of students that get together, that's an opportunity for us to engage with them through Students in Action.
Okay, thank you. Very good. I'll be in touch.
Sounds good. Appreciate it. Thank you again.
Mr. Hoppy, one other question. How are you funded?
We are completely funded through fundraising. About 80% of our budget comes from grants, both local grants, statewide grants, and national support. And the remaining 20% comes from individual contributions and traditional fundraising through a program called the Changemaker Program.
How is your management structure organized?
So again, we are, as a national nonprofit organization, we have a national office. But then each chapter in South Carolina, it's considered a chapter, has an executive director as well as a program staff specifically aligned with the student program.
Thank you.
We're very lean here in South Carolina. Any other questions?
Any of this, no comments or questions from council? Okay, thank you, Mr. Hoppy. Thank you for all you did for Georgetown County. We'll move on down to our presentations, our Outstanding Achievement Awards. Our Human Resource Director, Mr. Ackerman.
Thank you. I'm actually not presenting this award. I'd just like to introduce our presenter tonight. Mr. Robert Benfield is the Director of Insurance Services for the Association of Counties, which is the entity in charge of multiple different insurance arms. But the one that we participate in the most is the South Carolina Workers' Compensation Trust, which is our workers' comp insurance carrier. We're a member of the trust group, and at this time, I'd present Mr. Benfield to present the awards.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Council. Thank you for the opportunity to come before you once again. It's quite a privilege. Every year, the Association of Counties brings its members together. We have 41 counties in our workers' comp trust. Georgetown's been a valuable member for many, many years. And we seek out activities the county has done over the previous year that can result in the savings of lives, time, and money. And as you all are well aware of, there are so many things done in the background the public never hears about that involve saving lives, time, and money. So it's our privilege every year at our membership meeting in January to recognize those counties that have done activities that are worthy of recognition. So I have the honor tonight to present two awards to Georgetown County and your risk manager, Holly. The first award is an Outstanding Safety Achievement Award. This is an activity undertaken by a county that benefits the county employees and the public, and that could result in saving lives. This year, Holly and her team created a two-phase heat stress management prevention program, modeled after OSHA's heat stress program. Clearly, the goal of the program is to reduce heat stress injuries to our employees working in hot environments. And as we all know, summertime in South Carolina can get kind of hot out there. So what Holly and her team did is they created a policy position on how the county would handle training and equipment for your employees working out in the hot sun. The policy position was approved by the county administrator. It was adopted, and Holly and her team went out in the field and actually conducted training classes with your employees while they're out in the field. The training not only involved information on how to avoid heat stress and signs and symptoms, not only for the employee, but for those working around them. But she also ended up providing the employees with cooling rags, sunscreen, water bottles, and other tools and substances that could help prevent heat stress. This was quite an undertaking, and once again, the employees of your county benefit from Holly and her team putting this in place. This is just one of many activities that Holly and her risk management team have done over the years. The other piece of this is we talk about saving lives. We also talk about taking time and helping people. This year, Holly was nominated by Florence County for all the help that she gave personally to the new risk manager in Florence County so they didn't have to recreate the wheel. So as you all are well aware, Holly goes above and beyond to help anybody that she can. And so for her service work, helping other counties around her, she's also receiving our service award this year. So those are two great things that has happened in Georgetown County. The third piece is kind of interesting. Risk management by definition is what we do to prevent bad stuff from happening. And the goal of risk management is protect the county's greatest assets. Your number one asset is your employees. Your other asset involves county money, projects, buildings, et cetera. For four years in a row, Georgetown County has lowered what we call the Experience modifier factor for workers' comp. It means every year, we say, you should have had so many injuries for so much money. Anytime you have less than that, it's less than one, and your county gets a discount and saves your county money. For four years in a row, your county risk management program has saved your county hundreds of thousands of taxpayer dollars every year. Risk management is truly one of those positions that can save the county money. It is my honor this year to let you know that your current modifier factor is a .73, meaning that your county got a 27% savings off of what its workers' comp premium would have been. This year alone, that resulted in a savings of over $350,000 to the taxpayers of Georgetown County. So you're saving employees' lives, you're saving time, you're helping other people, and you're saving money. That is truly a successful risk management program by definition. The other part of this is Holly, as much as she worked- as much as she works and hard work she does with her team, she can't be successful by herself. So she has managed to get the buy-in of department heads, of Walt, of the county administrator, and importantly, county council to give her the support she needs to go forward. So it is our honor to present these two awards to you tonight and let you know what a fantastic job your risk management program is doing for your employees and for the taxpayers of Georgetown County. If you wouldn't mind coming forward, I'd like to present the awards to Holly and her team. And Mr. Chairman, if you'd like to come forward for a picture, I appreciate that. If you guys would give Georgetown County's risk management program a hand, I'd really appreciate that. They've done a phenomenal job for you guys.
Thank you for job well done. We'll move on down to our proclamation number 24-03 in honor and recognition of Judge Isaac Hyatt. Mr. Ackerman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Wow, I think I got a little loud. Sorry about that. Tonight, it's my honor to present to you a proclamation that honors the service of our recently retired Chief Magistrate, Judge Isaac L. Hyatt. I hope he's here. Before I read the proclamation, I'd just like to point out that this proclamation is, is well-written, is fantastic, and honors him greatly. But it speaks mostly to his service to justice through the magistrate's office. But one of the biggest losses that we're going to face when Judge Hyatt no longer entertains us on a daily basis is the loss of his leadership skills. He's, the, the court system itself, you don't hear a lot about it. It's very quiet, it's very reserved. I've had the opportunity over my short period of time here, about eight years with the county, to work with Judge Hyatt on several different occasions, some good, some bad, and some quite terrible. I've witnessed not, both being in the room and being outside of the room sort of eavesdropping, not by choice, but it just happened that way. The way he developed his staff, the way he led them through turmoil and trials and tribulations and developed their confidence in themselves, was able to empathize with his staff to help move them forward and through situations that they were faced with day in and day out. That classic leadership skills. And leadership is something that it's hard to learn and it's, it's easy to lose. But to keep it as long as he did, I think is, is a testament to his character and his ability. And with that, I'll move on into the proclamation. But I just want to say you'll be missed and thank you, Judge. We appreciate it. You, you can come over here and stand by me if you'd like. This is a proclamation in recognition and honor of Judge Isaac Hyatt upon the occasion of his retirement. Whereas Judge Isaac Hyatt is a lifelong resident of Georgetown County, born on Sandy Island, he graduated from Howard High School. Judge Hyatt pursued his education at Morris College and Coastal Carolina University and earned a Bachelor of Science in Criminal Justice from Liberty University. And whereas Judge Isaac Hyatt has devoted 40 years of service to the citizens of Georgetown, beginning with the Georgetown County Sheriff's Office in 1983, dedicating more than a decade to ensuring the safety and well-being of our community. And whereas his dedication and hard work led to numerous accomplishments within the sheriff's office, and he excelled serving in many capacities such as deputy supervisor, dare officer investigator, and narcotics investigator. And whereas in recognizing his exemplary service, then-South Carolina Senator Yancey McGill appointed him as a magistrate in 1996, marking the beginning of a distinguished judicial career. And whereas, serving with honor and integrity, Judge Hyatt took on the responsibilities of municipal judge for the town of Andrews before assuming the role of chief magistrate in 2002. And whereas Judge Hyatt has held numerous leadership positions, including serving as chairman of the Board of Magistrates and municipal judge certification and the magistrate's and municipal judges mentor program, contributing to the South Carolina Judicial Council and the Chief Justices Commission on the Profession for South Carolina and the Commission on Judicial Conduct for South Carolina. And whereas Georgetown County Council recognizes that retirement is a milestone that signifies the peak of a rewarding career and the beginning of a new chapter of life. Therefore, be it proclaimed, Georgetown County expresses its deepest gratitude to Chief Magistrate Judge Isaac Hyatt for his outstanding service, commitment, dedication, and invaluable contributions to the pursuit of justice in our community. We extend best wi- best wishes to Judge Hyatt upon his retirement, confident that his legacy will continue to inspire us all. So shall it be this 13th day of February and this the 20, the 2024 year of our Lord. Mr. Chairman, if we could get you for another photo opportunity.
You want to get the short ones on the stage? Are you getting the tall ones on the stage?
Okay. I think we got a little excited there. Kind of got ahead of ourselves. So you've heard the, the reading of the proclamation, number 24-03. Is there a motion pertaining to the proclamation? Okay, the move by Councilor John P. Dotson on proclamation number 24-03, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Carolina. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Oppose, motion carries. The proclamation has been adopted. Thank you again, Judge Hyatt, for all the services you have provided to Georgetown County and that you will continue to provide to Georgetown County. Thank you. We'll move on down to our public comments. A public comment period is included on each meeting agenda and shall be limited to 30 minutes. Each speaker will be limited to no more than three minutes. No speaker may yield his or her allotted time to another speaker. Members of the public who wish to address council during the public input period should sign up with a clerk of council before a meeting is called to order. Please note that, I think the timer will be on indicating the amount of time you have to speak and whatever time is left. We ask that you conclude your comments at the end of the three-minute period or even prior there too. Madam Clerk, do we have anyone speaking tonight?
Mr. Chairman, we do have four speakers signed up tonight. And as you stated, each will have up to three minutes. Our first speaker is John Scogneres.
Hello. My name is Captain John Scogneres. I own Aces Up Fishing Charters in Merle's Inlet, South Carolina. And pretty much here tonight. Again, I spoke last month with you guys. I am here about the boat ramp issues. We are more concerned right now with the boat ramp article of the 30-foot part of the article. We need an amendment to that article for the 30-foot. We just need to get rid of that. Once again, I, I did write a letter to everyone. Hopefully you read that letter. And then people who did get back to me, thank you very much. We just need to get rid of this 30-foot deal. Like I said, I've been in business for 20 years. Before the boat ramp was even part of Georgetown County, it's actually in Georgetown, but when the state took care of the boat ramp, you know, this 30-foot part of the article is going to put me out of business unless I go to a marina, which the cost of a marina is astronomical. We don't make that much money. As stated this before, the, the marinas just take too much money from us. It's hard for us to make any money doing this. The big deal is, is I know there's a thing about insurance. The insurance is not an issue. As I stated before, our insurance is a charter boat. It protects you from when our clients step their foot on the boat ramp to when they step their foot back into their car at the boat ramp. We're the only people who actually come down to the boat ramp that are required to have insurance. If you own your vessel outright, you're not even required to have insurance. It's not like a car. So we are required to have insurance. So that part of it, we shouldn't be worried about at all. We're actually the only people who are required to have insurance to come down there, to even use it. If I were to go to marina or to a slip behind the Big Tuna or Wahoos or wherever, the first thing that person is going to ask me who owns that slip, they're going to say, "I want to see your insurance." They can't be there because they don't want to slip and fall and be responsible. So anybody who's worried about the insurance, please don't worry about that. Also, being over 30-foot, which I'm over by this much, it's this much. It doesn't take up any more room in the parking area for the trailer and truck. It's still a six-pack vessel. It doesn't take up any more room if I was 29 feet and this much underneath the 30-foot barrier. It doesn't take any more room in the parking lot. It doesn't take up any more space at all to be this much over. It's still one boat, one truck, one vessel, one group of six people or less. So that's another thing we don't have to really worry about. Besides that, I just want to put a face again with the name Aces Up Fishing Charters. Like I said, we've been in business, we've been in 20 years taking care of people and doing a darn good job of it. That let us be in business for 20 years. So just want to put a face to it again. I think I'm up. So just let you know, this is who it affects. Thank you very much for your time.
Chris Spigener.
Good evening, council members. As you all know, I am Chris Spigener and I'm here to speak on the boat ordinance. And tonight, I would like to address one of your biggest concerns, and that's safety. Tonight, I am going to detail how to safely board 40 passengers onto a 40-foot commercial tour boat. Rover Tours has been safely doing this since 1995. And let me repeat that again. Rover Tours has been safely doing this since 1995. So for 29 years in operation, there has never been an accident while loading or unloading passengers at a dock. Rover Tours has never been sued. And here's how we do it. A Rover employee checks in the passengers as they arrive and they are directed to stand in line on land. The Rover tour boat comes into the face dock, securely ties up to the cleats. Once the boat is safely secured, passengers are directed down the gangway to the floating dock where the mate is standing to assist with stepping onto the boat. The captain is also onboard and assists passengers as needed. Once all passengers are onboard and seated, there is a safety information and information orientation given to the passengers prior to leaving the dock. This includes a life jacket demonstration and other important safety instructions. Oh, and most importantly, they are told where the bathroom is located and how to flush that marine toilet. The employee that was on land then unties the boat and they are off on an exciting and educational tour through Winyab Bay out to North Island, where they can explore a natural beach, gather shells, and enjoy the breathtaking views on North Island. On their return, passengers are told to remain seated and to the boat has been safely secured to the dock. The mate then opens the boat exit and steps onto the floating dock. Only then are the passengers allowed to stand and exit onto the floating dock and make their way back up to land. This is done safely and orderly and has been done so since 1995. Please vote to allow the permitted usage of the 40-foot tour boats at the Carroll Ashmore Campbell Marine Complex. Thank you for your time.
Matt Long.
Hi, how's it going tonight? I'm Captain Matt Long of Real Myrtle Beach Fishing Charters and I operate out of Merle's Inlet as well. Just here speaking on the boat ramp issue again tonight. So yeah, basically, I operate a 30-foot boat, so I would be affected by this ordinance. And I And I do have employees that would be greatly affected by this as well. Unfortunately, you know, if this ordinance does go through, it's going to cost me a lot more money, which could potentially put me completely out of business, which also puts my employees out of business as well. So, not only does this affect me, it affects, you know, others that are counting on me and for this ordinance to not pass in order to continue making a living the way we do. I've been doing this for four years now. I'm pretty greatly invested in this, still paying off my boats and stuff. So, like I said, if this goes through, this could really be the end of my business. I do have a million-dollar policy on both boats insurance-wise, so I'm covered from the minute that the people step out of their vehicle, like John Scogneres was saying. So, you know, we're definitely covered under that standpoint. As far as taking up space at the boat, I mean, or at the boat ramp, we are, the charter guys are the ones that know what they're doing. Most of the time, these people that are taking up space at the boat landing that are holding everybody up are the ones that are vacationers or weekend guys or whatever. I mean, I got my thirty-foot boat in and out and I'm out of there, you know? So, I'm not holding up impeding traffic. Like I said, I'm not an insurance liability from that standpoint. So, I really, personally, I don't see the difference in a twenty-nine-foot six-pack vessel and a thirty-one-foot six-pack vessel because at the end of the day, they're both doing the exact same thing, same business. So, again, like I said, the ordinance targeting thirty-foot and greater boats is kind of just, I feel like I'm being singled out. And like I said, that would greatly affect my business, could potentially put me out of business and my employees out of business as well. So, that being said, I mean, that's about all I really have to say. It's just kind of short, sweet, and to the point. But, yeah, just, I hope you guys hear what we're saying and, you know, we want to just continue doing business the way we have because there hasn't really been any issues out of the six-pack boats. That's all I got to say.
Clarissa Tooten.
Good evening. As I'm sure you are all aware by now, my name's Clarissa Tooten. For the past few months, you've heard many members of the community come and share their concerns for the future of tourism in Georgetown County. I know that safety is one of the main issues of concern, and for this, I will speak from experience. What y'all may not know about me is that I've actually led these tours for two years as a way to pay for my college tuition as a mate and interpreter. I can say that this job has been one of the most rewarding and enjoyable jobs that I have ever held. My training sessions consisted of lessons about safety, that's it. I was expected to learn about history and ecology on my own. This included safe loading and unloading of passengers, safety briefings for the guests, mandatory overboard trainings, and more. We actually had our yearly Coast Guard training scheduled for the week after we were forced to close. During the trip, there are three employees with guests at all times during the unloading and loading process. There is one checking everyone in, keeping them all off the floating dock and out of the way of recreational boat users. There's the captain and then there's myself. We get to the dock no more than five minutes before the tour is scheduled to reduce the impact on recreational boaters. Once we are safely tied up, the captain allows guests to walk to the boat in a single file line. The captain, in my experience, usually stands between the guests and the water, informing guests as they pass to be mindful of the floating nature of the dock. I stand beside the entrance greeting guests and helping them onto the boat safely. Unloading of passengers is handled in a very similar fashion with a person who checked the guests in, meeting us at the dock when we return, and assisting guests off the boat and up the ramp. We have never had an injury during the loading or unloading process as we all take it very seriously and are extensively trained on safety before we're able to lead tours of our own. Water-based tourism is extremely rewarding, not only for the guests, but also for those who take time to lead these tours. We are able to interact with people from all over the world, but also watch locals get their first glimpse of Winyabey. Echoing Councilman Newton, the bay can be a dangerous place for locals and non-locals. Ensuring the future of these tours ensures the safe travel and recreation of those who are not well-versed in boat operation or safety. I would like to say thank you for your time and consideration over these past few months, and I would really appreciate if y'all would consider amending this ordinance. Thank you.
That's our final speaker for tonight.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We'll move on down with our agenda. Please note that there are three matters on the consent agenda which were previously approved by virtue of the agenda approval process. And those three items are procurement number twenty-three dash zero two, procurement number twenty-four dash zero zero three, and procurement number twenty-four dash zero zero nine. We move down to our public hearings regarding ordinance number twenty-four dash zero one to amend the FPLM used map for three parcels located at Forty-Six Channel Bluff Avenue and Thirteen Two Three Six Ocean Highway identified as TMS number zero four dash zero one four one dash zero seven six dash zero zero dash zero zero, zero four dash zero one four one dash zero seven seven dash zero zero dash zero zero, and zero four dash zero one four one dash zero seven eight dash zero zero dash zero zero, from medium-density residential to traditional. Please note that the floor is now open for comments regarding ordinance number twenty-four dash zero one during this public hearing. Is there anyone with comments regarding ordinance number twenty-four dash zero one? Seeing that the floor is not closed. We move on down to appointments, the third reading of ordinances. Ordinance number twenty-three dash thirty-eight. An ordinance to amend Chapter Six, Section Six Three of the Georgetown County Court of Ordinances pertaining to Public Boat Landing Regulations. Attorney Watson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, this is the revised boat landing ordinance. There have been no changes from first and second reading. I'm happy to answer any questions if counsel has them.
Thank you, Attorney Watson. Any questions for Attorney Watson?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I have a couple. Mr. Watson, do we have any safety issues in the past that you know of? Have we had any litigation concerning our county boat ramps?
Concerning any of the county boat ramps? Well, I'm not aware of any since, well, I don't know of any litigation, whether there's been any accidents at any of them, I'm not aware.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other question for Attorney Watson? Seeing that number?
That was a similar line of questioning and concern that I've had. I've written this, Spigner mentioned the fact of the number of years that the company has been in business, no accidents, no suits. And I look at the situation as with all of the attributes. I will hold that for discussion.
Thank you. Any other question for Councilor Watson? Let's move on now. Is there a motion for a third reading approval of ordinance number twenty-three dash thirty-eight?
Second.
It's moved by Councilor Elliott for approval. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Anderson. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make an amendment.
Yes, Councilor Elliott.
I move to amend ordinance twenty-three thirty-eight, paragraph D three, to remove the thirty-foot length restriction.
We have a motion to amend from Councilor Elliott to remove the thirty-foot feet length restriction. Is there a second to the amendment?
Second.
Second by Councilor Macado. Any discussion?
Chairman, I'd like to make an amendment also. Motion, motion to amend?
Yes, Councilor Newton.
The reasons follows. Loading or unloading of any cargo of passengers for hire or compensation except and excluding captains who hold a current operation of uninspected passenger vehicle license, commonly known as six-pack or charter boat captain's license of a vessel with no more than six passengers for charter. Additionally permitted forty charter tourist vessels with a qualified captain and crew that are Coast Guard inspected and can carry up to forty passengers shall be permitted to utilize the Carol Campbell, Carol Ashmore Campbell Marine Complex. Permits for the larger boats may be obtained through parks and recreation, and the number issued per year will be at their discretion.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilor Newton, a second amendment to the initial ordinance. Is there a second, I think we had got to deal with the first one first. Is there a second on the second motion to amend? Before we can vote on it?
Second.
Yeah, second by Councilor Carolina. We'll take the motions one at a time. We'll first go with the first amended motion. All those in favor of the first amended motion, which is to remove the thirty-feet length restriction? All of those in favor of that particular amended motion, please raise your hand. We have Councilor Anderson, Councilor Macado.
Mr. Chair, point or?
Yes.
Should we not have some discussion on those motions?
All right, we move back. We'll go back forward. Are there any discussions regarding the first amendment? First amendment? Sina?
Mr. Chairman, I'll just, I'll just make a comment. I think moving the thirty-foot length restriction is, serves our constituents well, all our businesses in the commercial fishing industry, and it takes a burden and a worryation off their back.
Are there any other discussion regarding the first amendment?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, adding to that, with all that Georgetown County promotes as for tourism here, this is just another form of tourism. We have visitors coming to hunt, to fish, to walk along the ocean, to eat at our restaurants, shop at our boutiques, and also take tours, historical tours, ecotourism up and down the waterways of Georgetown County. And to put restrictions on activities that are positive for Georgetown, that would possibly reduce employment opportunities for individuals in that business tourism and deep-sea fishing, I feel we should attempt to find a way that we can make things work. If insurance and safety is an issue, well, the business people have presented their documents showing that they have the required insurance protection. We also have a risk management department that was just awarded, and if they could extend their professional skills and also risk and underwriting areas such as public boat landings on how we can further maintain and increase the safety, let's do that. And let us find a way that we can accommodate these businesses that are positive to Georgetown County.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I would, I would like to add a few words on the first amendment, which was thirty-foot length amendment. Just so folks understand that we listen, when we started to have some complaints about the thirty-feet, we did our due diligence, reached out to boat manufacturers to find out what they were making, what they had on the horizon, and determined that we're not probably maxed out on a trailerable boat yet. But what's available on the market, there's a, there's a lot of models over thirty-feet, so we did take that all into consideration in this, in this situation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chairman, I've got a quick question or an ask for Madam Administrator, considering Mr. Carolina's comments regarding safety. Would you be able to look into permitting and making sure that the users of the boat landings on the commercial side would have the proper insurance and six-packs and any other safety requirements needed before they use those landings?
Yes, we will respond back to council with some requirements that we'll have folks do as part of the package.
Thank you.
Any other comments, questions? Any further discussion regarding first amendment? All those in favor of the first motion to amend, which is to remove the thirty-feet length restriction? All those in favor of the amendment, please raise your hand. Oppose? Motion carries. Now, we'll, we'll go down to the second amendment, which would be an amendment to that particular one. And the second amendment basically is to add an exception for operation of charter tour boats with a qualified captain and crew of a Coast Guard inspected vessel carrying no more than forty passengers who may use the Carol Ashmore Marine Complex for loading and unloading passengers. So, all those in favor of the second amendment, please.
Discussion.
Oh, I'm sorry, we're discussing. We'll have discussion on the second amendment, I'm sorry. Any discussion?
Again, discussion is, here we have another tourist-generated business. Ecotourism, waterway tourism, you're riding up and down the waterways, you're learning more about, I call it, the water side of Georgetown. We have tourism and tourism trolleys that go down Front Street and up Prince Street. There are at least seven different types of tourism that comes in or tourism businesses in Georgetown County. This is another type of business that I feel would enhance learning more about Georgetown County. Have no questions about it. I feel it's a positive thing for Georgetown. The Rover Tours operation, or for that matter, any tourism with a limit of forty passengers with the proper safety practices in place at Carol Campbell Boat Landing will be a plus for Georgetown County.
Any further discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I want to take a look at this in a common sense way. It's, sometimes I think we make things a little too complicated, overthink. If I could ask all of you just to bear with me just for a few moments, and let's, let's just look at this in detail. We are not voting tonight here on individual, on one company. We're, we're here to vote on an industry. And if you're voting any other way except on this industry, you really need to take a second look at how you, how you're thinking about this ordinance. Now, I, I support this. And just looking at it common sense-wise, if you bring up the, the question of the safety, let's compare it to what we already allow and what we're going to allow. We have construction equipment being unloaded and loaded at our county landings almost on a daily basis. And when I say construction equipment, I'm not talking about this little sixteen, seventeen, twenty-foot boats. You're looking at barges being unloaded by piece and then assembled. You're looking at backhoes and trackhoes being loaded and unloaded, tons and tons of equipment. And they do it safely because if you do make a mistake with this equipment at, at a boat landing, you're going to lose it. So, they're, they're extra careful about it. We have many industries that use our boat landings, many industries. You're construction, equipment, you have crabbers, which is a huge industry in Georgetown County. It is so huge. You've got crabbers out there that have as many as two hundred pots or more in our bays and, and estuaries. You have, during certain times of the year, you have our commercial guys that go gather oysters. You have our commercial people that... You have our commercial people that, that gather clams. And one big commercial industry that most people are not aware of is our shadding industry. Now, all these, all these that go out, the crabbers, they're heavily laden with huge weights on their boat and crab pots. They don't carry them one crab pot out at a time. Some of them carry as many as 50 to 75 crab pots at a time to go set. And when we're comparing that to the tourism industry, if you're going, if you're going to say, no, we can't allow the 20, 30, 40 passengers to load and unload because it's unsafe, think about what we're already allowed to use on our boat lands. And I think they should be. Our shad fishermen, a lot of their time is spent out there at night. A lot of these guys work full-time day jobs, and the only time they can shad is at night when they get off work, and they'll shad all night long. And it's a very, it's a very dangerous industry. You're dealing with huge, heavy-laden nets that they either set or either they float with the current down the rivers. And they, they all use our county boat landings. The comment has also been made that why should we, the county, be funding a commercial use for our boat landings? Well, let's compare that to what the county already does. We have, as most of you know, we have approximately 300 miles of county roads. It's county maintained by county taxpayer dollars. Think about what goes on them roads. Farmers, they're driving tractors, they're hauling equipment, they're hauling their goods to market. Our loggers, because we constantly have to repair them after our logging crew tears one up, and they, they have the right to do that. Any, anybody that lives on a county road, you're going to call a plumber, electrician, a carpenter, a brick mason, a landscaper. All these commercial guys travel on county roads. Where you could make the argument, well, there's a $50 surcharge on each vehicle. Yes, it is. There's also, if you look on your tax notices, all the property owners in Georgetown County pays for parking recreation as well. So all these people that are, commercial people that are using our boat landings, they're paying for those boat landings. It's not anything that they're getting for free. They're paying for it, just like all the other taxpayers. And if you vote against this ordinance, you're voting against an industry. You're not voting against an individual. You're voting down an industry that will no longer be viable in Georgetown County. Now, in, in my opinion, we are not the friendliest county for businesses. And if we vote this down, this is just one more way I think that we will be showing that we are not a friendly county to, to our businesses. You need to take a hard look at it before you cast this vote tonight. I ask each one of you, vote for the industry and not an individual company. That's what we're dealing with. If, if there are any reason, anybody sitting on this council has a legitimate excuse that we should not at least try this, I would love to hear it tonight. Let's debate it. Let's talk about it. Because I really haven't heard one yet that is a good reason to deny this industry. It's, it's supported by the other commercial fishermen. Our Chamber of Commerce supports tourism. And this is part of the tourism industry. If we eliminate this part of it, think about how many people that will affect. You're affecting people working in restaurants. You're affecting hotels. You're affecting anybody that works in the service industry contacted with the tourism industry. This vote will affect each and every one of them. And I think it's something that we can pass. We can do it safely. We can support, show that this council supports our tourism industry. But if we vote it down, you're, we're basically saying we don't even want to try. And I'm just asking you to just at least give it a try. That's all it is. It's not as complicated as we make it out sometimes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other discussion regarding the Second Amendment? Hearing that we have a second already, is there a, all in favor of the Second Amendment, please raise your hand? We have two. All opposed? Motion dash, amendment dash. Now, we go back to vote on the original amendment with the first, the original motion, I'm sorry, with the First Amendment. All those in favor of the original ordinance with the First Amendment, please raise your hand. Oppose? Motion carries. We will move on down to ordinance number 24-01, to amend the future land use map for three parcels located at 46 Channel Bluff Avenue and 13236 Ocean Highway. Ms. Richardson?
Yes, sir. Thank you. This is a request from Mr. Billy Nichols to rezone three parcels from R10 and GC to Neighborhood Commercial or NC. These properties are located at 13236 Ocean Highway and 46 Channel Bluff Avenue in Paulies. There have been no changes to this item since second reading. And also, I forgot to mention, I'm covering here items 10C and 10D. And as a reminder, the Planning Commission held a public hearing on this issue. No one but the applicant came forward to speak. The commission voted five to zero to recommend approval for the rezoning request. They also voted five to zero to recommend approval for a change to the future land use map from medium-density to transitional to facilitate the request. Also, because it came in a comment at the last meeting, I included a zoomed-out map of the area to give you some idea of exactly where this is located. It's in front of you. And I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson. Any questions for Ms. Richardson? Okay, we'll take ordinance number 24-01 first. Is there a motion pertaining to ordinance number 24-01?
Same move.
It's moved for approval of ordinance number 24-01 by Counsel Mercado. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counsel Elliott. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Oppose? Motion carries. We're going down to ordinance number 24-02. Is there a motion pertaining to ordinance number 24-02?
Same move.
Moved by Counsel Mercado for approval. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counsel Elliott. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Oppose? Motion carries. We are now down to first reading of ordinances, which will be read into the record only, by title only. Ordinance number 24-04, an ordinance to amend the fiscal year 24 operating budget of Georgetown County. We move down to our approval of minutes pertaining to our meeting on January 23rd, 2024. Is there a motion pertaining to those minutes?
No.
Move for approval of those minutes. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counsel Mercado. It's moved by Counsel Elliott. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Oppose? Motion carries. Minutes are approved. Is there any further business to come before counsel?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a statement.
Counsel Carolina?
For the la, excuse me, for the last three years, I've been making a statement concerning the Clemente C. Pinkney Hate Crimes Act. On October 8th, 2019, Georgetown County Council passed Resolution 1922 supporting the enactment of legislation for and against hate crimes in South Carolina. And since that date, our state legislators have yet to pass this much-needed state law, leaving Wyoming and South Carolina as the last two states without such a law. Madam Administrator, Attorney Watson, and Chairman Morant, please put further emphasis on this request by writing our annual letter to our delegation, and I will continue to read this statement in the first two months of the new year until this law has been passed. Let them know that hate crime is not tolerated, not acceptable in Georgetown County and the state of South Carolina. Also today, I heard from State Representative Wendell Gilyard from Charleston, encouraging us to keep the good fight to make the law a reality. Thank you.
Any further business coming before counsel? Is there, is there a motion to adjourn?
No.
Moved by Counsel Elliott for adjournment. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counsel Mercado. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Oppose? Any standing adjourned?